We're appreciative of having those in the room with us tonight. And also, we're joined by individuals who will be with us virtually. And this forum is an open forum for people to speak on the topic of how best they think we should allocate the resources that have been granted to us by the federal government. Copper Crane will moderate the sequence of questioners by commenters by announcing names. And you're invited, those who are in the room first, we'll go through everybody who's in the room first, and they'll come up to the podium and speak. You're welcome to stay after you've given your testimony. You're welcome to leave. If we do get to a point where we have a certain amount of seats socially distanced, if we somehow get to a capacity point, we might ask those who have spoken to open up space for other people who aren't here yet. I don't know that we'll reach that capacity issue, but just keep it in mind. When we have exhausted all of the individuals who are in the room with us, we will then go to those who are with us virtually and hear their testimony as well. You are welcome to submit written testimony at any point in time that would outline whatever it is that you're going to share or other things that might become relevant by the time that you share it with us. We're happy to get the input and have discussions about how best to proceed forward. I'm joined tonight by the Deputy County Executive for Westchester County, Ken Jenkins, by our Director of Operations, Joan McDonald, by our Budget Director, Larry Sewell, and of course Copper Crane, who is a minister without singular portfolio. He handles so many things for us that we're deeply appreciated. We have Aviva Meyer from our executive team who's here. And downstairs, we had Ellen Hendricks, who's on our intergovernmental team, Assistant Director of Intergov, Kyle McIntyre is assisting her. Of course, we have tremendous professionals here on the technology side who know what I don't know, and they will help keeping us properly communicated. We are joined tonight, and she may be a speaker, I haven't looked at the list, by the Honorable Kitlee Kovale. Kitlee, please stand up for recognition. She's the county legislator that represents this region of the county. She will be completing her service at the end of the year, so we owe a specific, a particular debt of gratitude to Kitlee for her service. Thank you very much, Kitlee. Appreciate it. I'm going to just give some very general remarks, and then I'm going to ask our Budget Director, Larry Sewell, to walk through some of the specifics as relates to the ARPA program, American Rescue Plan Act funding. This is the second of two hearings that we've had. The program requires there to be this type of public input, although we generally have practiced in the county government, both in the legislative body and in the executive branch, having open discussions as we make major decisions. We established when we first began our administration three years ago, a public forum before we present the budget to the Board of Legislators. That was not precedent. The Board themselves holds a series of three public hearings, two in two regional parts of the county, and then the final one in White Plains before they adopt a budget. And we've had a variety of public sessions on a variety of issues. So we want the public input. We appreciate the transparency, and we think that's going to be helpful. Just in very general terms, the American Rescue Plan Act, we all followed what happened in the national media as an outgrowth to the impact to our economy that came from the COVID pandemic that struck us as a nation beginning on or about March of last year. So we've gone through 18 months of the pandemic. It is still with us. That's why we're still wearing masks and socially distancing. We've had our ups and downs, where things were better and things were worse, and we're not really sure if we're in a long haul here, in which we may be dealing with something like this for quite a while to come. As Americans, we tend to like things to be overdone and cleaned pretty quickly. This may not be that. And so we have to look at how are we going to respond economically, as well as to the needs of people that exist all across, for our purposes, this county. We have allocated money in our annual budgets to do a wide variety of services, and we've been limited by the fact that county governments are limited in their authority and in the amount of revenue they have. Because basically, we raise money by taxing property and by taxing sales transactions. Those are the two major revenue streams. The federal government and the state government operate on a more progressive footprint, which is taxation by income. And so the more you make, the more you contribute to the benefit of the society that has helped you. It's not fixed based on just transactions of either real estate or sales. But this county government, this administration, we think has made some very significant commitments, even during the COVID year last year, to fund programs that we know are of value, and we appreciate whatever your testimony is about those programs and what is possible. There are things that are particularly targeted in the ARPA program for priority. As we try to identify the way that these two tranches of money will be used, they will complement that which we intend to pay for normally in our county budget, which we will be doing that cycle very shortly. The Board of Legislators will receive the county budget in November. They will have their deliberations. We would expect to act on it by December and have the new budget into place. And so there's resources that the county has directly, and now we have these additional resources that the federal government has provided, with which we hope to make the best possible use. With that, I ask Larry Sewell, our Budget Director, to talk us through a little bit about what the ARPA program is all about. And then when he is completed, I'll ask Copper Crane to call the first speaker, and we'll get started.
Thank you, County Executive. So the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law on March 1st of this year. On March 10th, the Department of Treasury issued the interim final rule, which is 151-page document. So what I'm going to briefly describe only is a highlight of what's in there. There are a lot of specifics. Westchester County was allocated $187.9 million under ARPA. $93 or close to $94 million was paid to the county on May 19th of this year. While we have incurred expenses related to COVID and have been addressing issues related to COVID, we have yet to claim any of that money as far as revenue is concerned for the county. So that's the purpose of this meeting here, is to hear input from the public in terms of your intended uses of the funds. We have until December 31st, 2024, to obligate the funds, and so we have a number of years in which to spend the money. It does not all have to be spent within the first year. There are five primary categories that we may invest the funds in. One is support the public health response. Two is to address negative economic impacts. Three is to replace public sector revenue loss. And four is premium pay for essential workers. And five is water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. The funds may cover costs from March 3rd, 2021, through December 31st, 2024. There's broad flexibility to help those disproportionately impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. Additionally, there is greater flexibility for qualified census tracts and other communities, households, and businesses disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. One major difference under the ARPA versus the CARES Act, which were funds that we received last year, is that it may be used for revenue loss on the part of the county, in which case we can use it for any eligible government expense. So I do want to mention that while we haven't claimed any of these funds, we have been spending money. We have provided grants to small businesses. We have provided funding to remote learning centers, conducted safe elections, provided funding for food insecurity, as well as other COVID-related activities. So, and a lot of that was funded under the prior CARES Act. So as far as supporting the public health response, I mean, this covers a lot of different areas, so I'm not going to go into each and every one of them. But some of the items include treatment and medical health services, enhancing behavior and mental health services, and supporting local health and safety workforce. As far as negative economic impacts, we can provide assistance to households, including food assistance, rent, mortgage, utility assistance, counseling, cash assistance, to name a few items. Also can provide small business and not-for-profit support, which we did provide under the CARES Act. We provided grants to small businesses, and we are currently developing a program to provide grants to small businesses and not-for-profits. So, and one other area here, water, sewer, infrastructure. So it's limited to those areas as far as infrastructure, but we can use these funds to invest in water and sewer capital projects. Ineligible expenses would be extraordinary deposits to the pension fund, using funds for non-federal match when barred by other programs, deposit to the rainy day funds, and infrastructure spending outside of water, sewer, and broadband. And general economic and workforce development activities unless they directly address negative economic impacts of the public health emergency. So I'll kind of leave it at that. There's a lot to talk about here, but I think we're here to hear about what your desires are in terms of our use of the ARPA funds. So I'll hand it back.
Hello, everyone. Thank you very much for attending today. Regarding your comments, we would appreciate if you kept your comments to roughly three minutes in time. I will time you. When you have about 30 seconds left, you'll see me raise a yellow placard, which you'll see me doing here right now. When you are out of time, I'll raise a red placard, which I'm doing right now. We are going to move on to our first speaker at this time. Our first speaker is Kim McNair from My Sister's Place.
Thank you, County Executive Latimer, and Deputy County Executive Ken, and the Executive Committee, and even the sound guys to make this possible. My name is Kim McNair, and I am the Director of Social Transformation at My Sister's Place. I'm here tonight as a representative of MSP and also represent, I represent us as a member of nonprofit Westchester. And I stand here in support of the recommendations that you'll hear in a minute from Jan Fisher regarding those recommendations. My sister's place has provided services to survivors of domestic violence and human trafficking for decades. And throughout the pandemic, as survivors continue to turn to us for relief from violence, staff, many of whom are women, Black, and people of color, have put themselves in harm's way to provide those services. During the pandemic, in my role as an anti-violence educator, I continue to teach community partners the dynamics of domestic violence, how to address DV, and the services that MSP provides. We never closed our shelter door. We pivoted to use new technologies to support clients so we could continue to provide those services as the pandemic rages on. I learned from many of the people in those groups that they did not know that people who work in DV agencies are essential workers. We are, in fact, part of a broad range of essential workers who must be physically present at our jobs, including, among others, social service and human services staff. Our work, unfortunately, is unrecognized by many in the community. I stand here to say that we support nonprofit Westchester's recommendations for a robust grant program specifically for 501(c)(3) direct service nonprofits. We support the recommendation to provide premium pay for nonprofit essential workers, offering additional support to those who have borne and will continue to bear the greatest health risks because of service in critical infrastructure sectors. See, these recommendations are not just a rising tide. We know that tides ebb and flow. Racial equity in this pay is a signifier of racial equity. It means having fair and accessible treatment for everyone, and it holds society to a higher standard. It recognizes and demands systemic change to transform outcomes. Allocating funds according to nonprofit Westchester's recommendations will be a tremendous step towards doing that for staff at My Sister's Place, and in turn for clients across the almost 500 square miles of Westchester County. I want to thank you, County Exec Latimer, and the rest of the team for taking a step to recognize us in the very important work that we do and that we will continue to do. And thank you for that recognition that I'm sure will come in a very tangible way. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Allison Lake, the Westchester Children's Association. Thank you for coming tonight, Allison.
Thank you. Too many beads and things in mask here, but thank you. Good evening. My name is Allison Lake, and I'm the Executive Director of Westchester Children's Association. County Executive Latimer, we appreciate the commitment of you and your administration to use federal relief funding to support families hardest hit by the pandemic. The American Rescue Plan includes health and human services provisions for an additional $150 million national investment in maternal, infant, and early childhood home visiting, McV. New York State has been awarded 1.4 in supplemental appropriations to enable McV recipients to address the needs of expecting parents and families of young children during COVID-19. As the State Department of Health allocates these funds to localities, Westchester Children's Association urges you to use Westchester's funding to expand the capacity of existing home visiting programs. Home visiting is a proven and effective strategy for improving maternal and child health outcomes, reducing child abuse and neglect, promoting social-emotional bonding, and increasing school readiness. Programs are voluntary, evidence-based, and deliver services and supports to families from early in pregnancy through the first few years of a child's life. Paraprofessionals visit the home or host teller visits, providing vital information, resources, and referrals on breastfeeding and young children's physical, emotional, and cognitive development. They really are a win-win for our families and our counties. With only 424 families served in 2020 and capacity to serve only 4% of Westchester's low-income Medicaid-eligible children ages 0 to 3, the county's allocation of the American Rescue Plan funding presents an essential, immediate opportunity to support children during their most critical development period. In addition, home visiting is an effective model against racial disparities in Black maternal health and birth outcomes that I know you, County Exec, and the Commissioner of Health are well aware of. Other cities, counties, and states have moved towards universal home visiting, and there are examples of how to financially sustain the program, including tax levy dollars used in New York City, Medicaid in Oregon and New Jersey, and contributions from health insurance companies in Rochester County. WCA strongly recommends that Westchester County use the ARP McV funding to expand existing home visiting programs and onboard new universal models. This is an opportunity for us all to be bold in our design. WCA has had some initial conversations with the Westchester County Department of Health and Department of Community Mental Health Commissioners, who are willing to work with us to investigate further the details and options that are available. I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much, Allison. Our next speaker is Shirley Acevedo Buontempo. I apologize if I got that wrong. Thank you so much for attending tonight. We do appreciate your input.
Nope, that was well done. Acevedo Buontempo. Thank you. Lots of vowels. Thank you, County Executive Latimer, Deputy County Executive Jenkins, and Directors McDonald and Sewell for hosting these two public forums on the American Rescue Plan Act. I come here this evening as the founder and strategic officer of Latino U College Access and a representative of the nonprofit sector in Westchester County. Our organization is a proud member of NPW. We encourage and support NPW's recommendations to allocate funding in partnership with the nonprofit sector in the county. Latino U College Access is a college access and success organization that empowers low-income, first-generation Latinx youth on their journeys to and through college. We envision a world where educational equity and opportunity are accessible to all, so that children can fulfill their remarkable potential. Luca has been working diligently with Westchester County Latinx students since 2012, and we want to make an even bigger impact in our community. Through our partnership with local school districts that have over 50% Hispanic student population, we have served over 6,000 parents and students delivering culturally relevant bilingual programs, informing and guiding students in this process. But our community, our families, our students face many challenges and obstacles to fulfill their dreams. The pandemic increased these barriers exponentially, and we were determined to continue to support them through this critical period. We work closely with our school partners, their guidance counselors, community partners, and many volunteers. Programs such as ours take a comprehensive community approach that has been proven to improve college persistence and completion for low-income students of color. Educational equity and the need to achieve it has never come into sharper focus than it did in 2020. As you explore ways to use American Rescue Plans, I would like to propose that funds be allocated to address the disparities faced by low-income students of color in Westchester and create opportunities to bolster post-secondary outcomes for our students. While many needs are competing for these dollars, most of them aimed at accelerating economic recovery for individuals, families, and communities, one of the surest paths to economic mobility is post-secondary or college education, be it vocational, two-year or four-year. Students of color who were most impacted by COVID-19 economically and otherwise stand to benefit most from programs that address the challenges they face. Unfortunately, the pandemic set back the significant progress that was made in higher education, resulting in lower enrollment and discontinuation of post-secondary plans. In Westchester County, the reality that children are living in two separate worlds was never more evident than during the pandemic. Hispanic and low-income youth and children of color struggled with access to Wi-Fi and technology to do their work, and often had limited space or had to work while they went to school. This is a critical time to meet students where they are, to provide them with support, and we hope that you will support post-secondary and career planning, not only for our children's future, but our county's future and our future workforce. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Shirley. Our next speaker is Sean Mead from the Westchester Hotel Association.
Thank you, County Executive George Latimer, and the rest of the county executive staff for your leadership and support of tourism during these challenging times. My name is Sean Mead. I'm the General Manager of the Cambry Hotel downtown White Plains, and also the President of the Westchester Hotel Association. Westchester hoteliers have lost substantial revenue over the past 18 months, and are forecasting a challenging winter horizon over the months ahead. We need capital to operate and to survive. While many of our accommodations fly the flags of highly established corporate brands, most of the county's properties are small business franchises and solely accountable for individual income statements. So even though you see the name Marriott or Hilton on the building, you know, a lot of these properties are owned by individual franchisees, it's important to point that out. Unfortunately, three of our largest properties, among others, have closed in 2020. The Doral Arrowhead at 369 rooms, the Hilton Westchester at 445 rooms, and the Renaissance Westchester at 348 rooms. In total, Westchester County has lost 20% of hotel rooms and an even higher proportion of our meeting space. Tonight, we are here to discuss how an allocation of financial support from the American Rescue Plan can be instrumental in reigniting Westchester's tourism economy. Prior to pandemic, leisure, business, and event bookings enjoyed steady growth. In fact, 2019, Westchester County was at our peak with $2.1 billion in economic impact from visitor spending. This was largely driven by meeting and transient bookings midweek, and leisure getaways and social events on weekends. Westchester County's hotel revenues have been hit hard. In the first 12 months of the pandemic, revenues declined 56.3% from the previous 12 months. Even with 20% less hotel rooms, hotel rates and occupancies remain well below the 2019 peak. While revenue is down, inflation and expenses such as utilities and taxes remain steady, and to exacerbate things, Westchester hoteliers are also navigating four formidable dynamics. The first one is the hospitality sector hit hard by business travel decline. Now, you think about Pepsi, Mastercard, Heineken, Swissery, a lot of these large corporate customers that are in our backyard, you know, they're still not traveling back to the area, and that creates a slew of problems for us. Only a little more than 40% expect business activity to return to pre-pandemic levels in 2022 or even later. There's a recent survey that came out that 70% of New York City businesses that return to office will be a hybrid, and we're expecting to see similar in Westchester County here. Spending on business travel will only recur to pre-pandemic levels in 2024, and that's according to the Research Global Business Travel Association. There is a silver lining. Westchester delivers what pent-up travelers are yearning for: easy access, a sense of history, many outdoor activities, and exceptional dining. We anticipate a challenging winter and long road to recovery, currently speculated to be 2024. ARP funds can make a meaningful and necessary difference both short term and long term. Our recent loss at a Renaissance Westchester only further limits our viability for larger business meetings and may further slow our recovery. A financial infusion for Westchester hoteliers will benefit the stimulation of Westchester's tourism economy on three fronts: mitigating additional hotel closings within our market, amplifying Westchester's marketing voice to leisure and business prospects, and fostering a strong guest experience with increased servicing and dining amenities. In closing, our ask is that you consider and include our hotels in the economic recovery allocation. Thank you for this opportunity to address you today.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Timothy Foley from the Building and Realty Institute. Thank you for joining us today, and we appreciate your comments.
Thank you so much, and thank you for listening. I'm Tim Foley. I'm the CEO of the Building and Realty Institute. Although we are not members of nonprofit Westchester, we would also like to endorse the recommendations that you will hear shortly. I'm also here as a member of the Welcome Home Westchester Campaign, a multi-stakeholder campaign to drive forward a new conversation around housing in the county. Our campaign includes folks from the business community, the not-for-profit community, faith leaders, academics, activists, and those involved in home building, construction, and the real estate industry, united in our common belief that housing is fundamental. It is oxygen for our local economy in attracting employers who will want to know that their employees can reasonably afford to live in the area on their salary and not suffer through commutes of an hour or longer. It is security for our families and a difference makers for our kids. And it sits at the intersection of so many issues that Westchester County residents care passionately about: jobs in the economy, property taxes and the quality of our schools, racial justice, and climate sustainability. And I don't need to tell you that the shortage of affordable housing in Westchester is acute and that there is a need for 82,451 affordable units to deal with the issues of affordability, substandard housing, severe overcrowding, or those who are seeking housing but find no affordable housing in the present day, including a demand for 11,703 units of new construction. And I know I don't need to tell you, because you literally wrote the book on it, the 2019 Housing Needs Assessment is chock full of information and policy ideas and ought to be required reading for municipal officials and anyone wishing to serve on a land use board. And it's also fertile ground for use of this funding. We have confidence that the housing shortage in Westchester County is already top of mind and will be prioritized in the programs that the county pursues with these federal dollars, particularly since COVID-19 sent the prices of real estate in our county, which were already high, into the stratosphere with a bump in migration out of New York City and a buyer's frenzy in real estate, truly the definition of a negative economic impact. We think that ultimately, there should be some prioritization, support, and technical assistance from the county made available specifically to municipalities who are reexamining their land use board processes and their zoning to root out antiquated barriers to creating the housing we need. Often, these emergency relief programs gravitate to projects that are the most shovel-ready, but we believe that there is an opportunity to not just get those shovels digging, but also to create a foundation for meeting our housing needs and promoting future growth as we come out of this crisis. Thank you for listening, and we appreciate the county's continued leadership on this issue.
Thank you. Next, we have Alex Roethmeyer from the Westchester Young Democrats. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you, Copper. And thank you, everyone, for holding this, and thank you to the sound guys. My name is Alex Roethmeyer. I'll be wearing a few hats. Resident of White Plains, president of the Westchester Young Democrats, as well as a fan of nonprofit Westchester and everything they're going to say, and my involvement with the Welcome Home Westchester Campaign. Westchester County is in dire need of more units of housing to meet the demand of the current and future workforce. This is a crisis that is intimately felt by residents who struggle to find and hold on affordable places to live, is a concern for employers who are looking to move to this region, and is a subject that has been exhaustively studied by in the Westchester County Housing Needs Assessment that was released at the end of 2019. There were concourse conclusions that stated that Westchester County needed 11,783 new housing units of affordable just to meet present-day needs. Since the publication of this assessment, the needs for new housing, and specifically affordable housing in general, has only exasperated by all the effects of COVID-19. Now, some municipalities in Westchester County have shown creativity in encouraging affordable housing, mixed-use development, redevelopment of underused and blight land parcels, and transit-oriented development through creative overlay zoning, industrial developments, agencies, and other solutions. But with such an eye-popping total number of units of housing needed and the growing sense of desperation, no municipality can be left with the confident that they're doing what they need to do to close a gap. This housing surge was not a product of accidentally or through unintended consequences. This housing surge has not, was not a product of accidentally or through unintended consequences. It reflects a system that is deliberately constructed to create barriers to create new units of housing, to keep working families out of Westchester. To be fair, the volunteer land use board members serving their communities today did not establish this broken system, but it does not mean that the system isn't continuing to do exactly what is intended to do: create barriers to meeting new housing needs. These barriers particularly come in the form of neighborhood defenders, who often attend public meetings and speak out against the attempt to make even the most inconspicuous affordable housing easier to build. They often assume there is no cost to delay in the endless search for the ever-elusive goal of "get it right." Nothing could be further from this truth. Study after study shows that when suburban communities like ours greenlight housing to meet their needs, it brings in short-term jobs, long-term jobs, an increase in revenue for local businesses, a boost to our property taxes, and a boost to our property taxes. Indeed, the status quo has its own costs to existing residents. Making it harder for us to meet our housing needs also leads to Western municipalities to pass up opportunities for economic growth, addressing some of our core concerns of our financing for municipalities' services and school districts, and create a wholly unnecessary drag on our economies. So I am asking for the government to, uh, for this government to dedicate funds to examining ending and ending the barriers of building more affordable housing. To invest in the people of Westchester, we must invest in where they live. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jan Fisher from nonprofit Westchester. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. Thank you, County Executive Latimer, Deputy County Executive Jenkins, and Directors Sewell and McDonald. It is really, I am Jan Fisher, Executive Director of nonprofit Westchester. It is truly an honor to be here tonight among our members, our partners, and other change warriors. And I am a proud steering committee member of the Westchester, of the Welcome Home Westchester Campaign of the Builders Institute. During the pandemic, tens of thousands of Westchester residents turned to 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations for help, and we delivered to all people from all backgrounds and at all income levels, often without a great deal of public acknowledgement. And today, at this very moment, nonprofit workers are serving hard-working families, once again tragically impacted by situations beyond their control: Hurricane Ida. When hotel workers, small business owners and employees, and other residents need mental health treatment, support for childcare, educational services, and more, and they don't know where else to go, they come to us for high-quality care and services. As Westchester County begins to allocate $188 million of ARPA funds, our recommendations are: allocate funding in partnership with the nonprofit sector; bring us to the table with other business partners; center racial equity from the outset. COVID-19 has revealed what we have known: racial disparities and the social determinants of health that caused Black and Brown people to die from COVID at twice the rate of white people must be addressed now. A majority of the nonprofit workforce consists of women and people of color, many of whom have and continue to put themselves in harm's way in service to others. Provide premium pay for nonprofit essential workers. Support nonprofits to support our most vulnerable. Provide a robust grant program specifically for 501(c)(3) nonprofits. Like other businesses, nonprofits need funding for operational expenses, and we have been left out of this. Report and publicly disclose the county's plan for allocating ARPA federal relief funding. Thank you for your partnership, and thank you for being so accessible to us and our members.
Thank you. Our next and for now, final in-person speaker is Kathy Halas, the Executive Director of Child Care of Westchester. Thanks so much for coming.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you so much for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. The National Women's Law Center describes childcare as, quote, "the work that makes all other work possible." Economist James Heckman says it's a return on investment of 13% for every dollar that goes into quality childcare, from children who stay in school longer, graduate from high school, earn more money, are more physically healthy. And that 13% doesn't include other benefits for women when they are not forced to exit the workforce or have their careers interrupted. They earn more money, they qualify for more Social Security, and are less likely to be poor at retirement. In virtually every report on getting people back to work, childcare comes up. I've just joined the Workforce Committee of the Mid-Hudson Regional Economic Development Council, and in a meeting last week, employers cited childcare as one of the key barriers to getting workers. And it's important to remember that childcare was not in great shape before COVID. So our request for ARPA funds is not to restore what was lost, it's to begin to build a better system that actually serves Westchester families. In the last two years, New York State has received unprecedented childcare funding from the federal government. They've used that funding for childcare scholarships, for the elimination of the parent subsidy share to raise family subsidy eligibility to 85% of state median income, to pay childcare businesses for closures and absences. Our Department of Social Services took advantage of every opportunity offered by the state to help parents and the childcare community. We're very grateful that they moved so aggressively, but those programs have all ended. But I do want to thank Westchester County for moving quickly to sustain scholarships for many of the children through the end of this year. But despite historic levels of, of federal support for childcare, New York State clings to a statewide subsidy income eligibility threshold of 200% of the federal poverty level. That's equal to just under $35,000 for a family of two. It doesn't work for Westchester with its higher median income and higher cost of living. In Westchester, infant care in a licensed center averages $21,000. A single parent with a baby who makes $48,000 doesn't qualify for the subsidy and somehow would have to pay a childcare bill that's over 40% of their income. So on behalf of the Public Policy Committee of the council, I urge you to use ARPA funds to bring childcare affordability to some Westchester parents who have never experienced that before. There are many Westchester children whose families need help paying for childcare, about 45,000 of them. They're up to 13 years old. They live in households with working parents where income is under 400% of the federal poverty level. We base our request not on that universe because the take-up rate for the childcare subsidy has never been anywhere close to 100%, and we know that the return to work, uh, may be gradual. So our request is for $5,620,000 per year to help parents who are over income for the subsidy, and that breaks down into two different buckets: $4,120,000 for new title 20 slots, and second, $1,500,000 to bring back the Westchester childcare scholarship program. Um, I have more to, yeah, I'm done, right? Yeah, okay. I'm so sorry. I have more to say. I will follow up in writing. Thank you again.
I was just going to say, yeah, if you do have additional comments, please do feel free to submit them to us online. We do have an online service which, uh, the email address to which I will read shortly. Uh, until then, I'd like to give our next speaker an opportunity to speak. Our next speaker is Nicholas Thompson.
May I just thank, acknowledge that we're in support of the MPW recommendations? Elsewise, you know, Jan Fisher will kill me, so I want to go on the record.
And Mr. Thompson, before you speak, just let me remind the speakers that we have an upcoming budget, which includes budget, um, forums and dialogues there. Uh, there'll be plenty of discussion about how county money is going to be used, and ARPA will ultimately be part of that picture. So what we're talking about tonight is, is one significant bucket of money, but, and I think as everybody here knows, we have been very committed over the last three budgets in increasing the amount of money that we spend in every one of these social areas. We continue to, uh, to plan to follow that philosophy, but we do appreciate your specific asks and requests, so we have an idea of what, what is important to you. Sorry to interrupt your testimony, sir.
No, you are fine. Um, my, my actual name is actually Nicholas Thompson. I have lived in Westchester County for my entire life. I am one of the people who cannot afford to live here. I don't make enough. This is a serious issue because, um, there are towns that have lost over half their youth population over the past 10 years. And if we keep having youth after high school leave, then who will be here to work in the hotels or other, um, stores and shops? It's, it's, it's a matter that has to be, um, dealt with because I don't want to leave. I would love to stay here, but if I have to, I will. I really don't want to leave, but, you know, um, there, you know, um, I do appreciate everything that you guys have done to help through this serious health that we've all been deal, deal, dealing with for the past 18, um, for the past year and a half. I know it's been rough on everyone. I'm essential. I work at Audi. I am not here to represent Audi, but, but I've been working as a service valet with Audi for the past over two years. I don't make enough to live here, you know? I think there really needs to be more of an understanding as to what young people want because they're moving to cities like White Plains and Yonkers and not to more wealthier towns like Rye and, and other towns like that. There was a, uh, a study by the Community Housing Innovations, which I can email, which does talk about that some of these towns have lost over 60% of their youth population from 18 to 34. I appreciate you giving me the time to, uh, talk about this important issue, and I will end my, and I will end now.
Thank you very much for your comments. For everyone else's reference, if you would like to email us your comments, the email address that you should submit them to is westchesterforward@westchestergov.com. Again, that email address is westchesterforward@westchestergov.com. Thank you so much. So, uh, since we have no more speaker cards for folks who are here in person, we are going to move to our folks who are here online. Our first online speaker is John Rabbits of the Business Council of Westchester. Just one moment here, John, while I bring you online. John, you should be online and unmuted right now.
Good evening, County Executive Latimer. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you very much for joining us today.
Great. County Executive Latimer, Deputy County Executive Jenkins, and the rest of the Latimer Senior Administration team, thank you for, uh, holding this meeting today. Wanted to just very highlight a report that we have sent to all of you on the dais, as well as other members of your administration, that came from a August 18th town, virtual State of the Economy Town Hall meeting, in which we asked BCW members to elicit ideas from our members on how the county should utilize, uh, the funding that they will be receiving over the next two years from the American Rescue Plan. The forum was cosponsored by the county and featured Westchester County's Director of Economic Development, Bridget Givens, and Westchester County's Planning Commissioner, Norma Drummond. More than 80 people attended the virtual forum, with many more watching on our Facebook page, and since the meeting, uh, because it was recorded, uh, over 60 people have watched it, uh, through our Business Resource Center page on our website. Uh, everyone who participated in the, uh, these, the meeting provided a wide range of what we think are exciting and innovative ideas. Uh, the latest report, which I, which we sent to you, and we will resubmit, uh, tonight, uh, hopefully gives you a breakdown of 19 different sectors and the recommendations that, uh, had came from the Town Hall meeting. And what was really exciting about the recommendations is we really asked people, and these were leaders of sectors, both profit and non-for-profit, to really dig in and to really look at some of the things that obviously, uh, the county has to focus on, uh, due to the pandemic, but then moving forward. And I've heard the county exec talk about the rebound and what we need to do to move the county forward. So what you'll find in the report, County Executive Latimer, is recommendations dealing with job training, broadband, a non-for-profit, childcare, healthcare, uh, life science, and advanced manufacturing, infrastructure, tourism and travel, technology, entrepreneurship, urban planning, parks and recreation, retail and hospitality, uh, and the arts. And as you go through the report, uh, again, you'll see some very specific recommendations. Some of them were mentioned tonight, so I'm certainly not going to repeat them, uh, but these are recommendations that obviously hopefully will give the county a roadmap as they begin to look at not just the funding they're going to be receiving from Washington, but as you're putting together your 2022 executive budget. We hope that the Town Hall meeting that we held with the county executive, uh, just is another example of the Business Council of Westchester's ongoing commitment to work with you, to continue to do all we can and to bring our resources to the table to help you and your administration that have done an incredible job over this last year and a half. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, John. We're going to move to our next online speaker now. Just one moment, please. Our next online speaker is Rita Walton. Rita, you should be online now, and you should be unmuted, so we should be able to hear you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Hi, Copper, hi, County Executive Latimer, and all of the county legislators. Um, my name is Rita Walton. I live in Yonkers. I am an activist, and I'm in NYCD16 Indivisible. I'm a Democratic District Leader. I'm a member of the Westchester Meditation Center. I'm a member of CFOW, another activist organization. So when I heard that there was a meeting to talk about how to spend these funds, I thought I'd just pipe up and give my opinion and sort of the opinion of some of these folks out here. And the three things that are really high on our list are climate change, police reform, parks. So I'll just start by quoting the UN recently released report about climate change, that humans' use of fossil fuel and deforestation has contributed to climate change. It has caused this climate change. The temperature has risen by 2.2 degrees Fahrenheit in the last 100 years, and that is irreversible, and it's going to continue rising unless we do something. And the changes are affecting farms, storms, sea levels, and we must stop carbon emissions right away, or they're going to keep, uh, this is going to keep on happening, and the warming is going to continue to happen. So I'm not sure where all the buckets of money, as the county executive was mentioning, are delegated for. I'm not sure if climate change, uh, is, money is going to be in a different bucket, but if there's any opportunity for climate change initiatives, then that would be great to work on that. Then finally, I don't know if, oh, not finally, but also parks. Parks are very important to people. Adding parks, maybe new parks. The gentleman before was talking about keeping young adults in Westchester. There's a lot of cities that have added adult playgrounds to parks. Boston has an adult playground. St. Louis built a sort of an adult playground out of an old shoe factory that's very popular there. The Miami-Dade Parks have senior components for seniors at their parks, and, uh, so parks are very important, adding more parks, keeping more parks. And then... And then finally, so much has happened on police reform. I'm not sure if that's included in this, possibly not. But if that can keep going, it would be a shame to lose the momentum that we had regarding the police reform and all of the good work that's happened around that. So maybe if more education could take place or more outreach, that would be great. Thank you very much, everyone, and have a good night.
Thank you very much, Rita. So with that, all of our current speakers have, at this time, given us their testimony. We have a number of folks who are here digitally and a number of folks who are still here in person. If any of you would like to, if any of you who are here in person would like to speak, please, if you could just go back to the front and fill out one of those cards, and we'll call you up. If anyone here who's here online would like to speak, please just send me a chat. You can do so by clicking the chat button, which has a little speech bubble on it in the bottom right-hand corner of the screen. And if anyone would like to submit their comments via email, you can do so by emailing your comments to westchesterforward@westchestergov.com. Again, that email address is westchesterforward@westchestergov.com. Thank you all so much for the comments you provided us with so far tonight. We look forward to any more you may have.
Let me add a couple of thoughts as we've heard the testimony so far. We are scheduled to be here to 8:00. We will have a presence here for anyone who comes in person or online up through that hour. Joan McDonald has agreed to chair the meeting through the end of it. Thank you, Joan. We appreciate that. Overtime pay, I guess. But I just want to highlight, for those that are online and those in the room, the normal allocation of resources that Westchester County makes for a host of different purposes can be found by looking at the Westchester County budget. In that budget, you will see departmental allocations for parks. You will see money allocated for many of the programs, social programs we've talked about. And there are allocations that come directly for specific purposes and some that are within departments like Community Mental Health, Department of Health, Social Services, and a host of other different areas. As I said, the important thing to understand is we are talking about how you see your priorities, but implicit in that should be that this county government has made tremendous allocations of money already within our own resources. And now we're looking at what we do with additional money that we have. You should be advised that the money that we are being given will be given in two tranches that will cover, in essence, the next two years. They do give us an open-ended period of time to complete, not completely open-ended, but more than a two-year period of time. But it's also important to understand that when you advocate for money to be spent, there could very well come a time when that money will not be given to us additionally by the federal government. So when we take on responsibilities, there is a future date at which the county on its own might have to support that outreach. So it's very important for us to know that there is sustainability in the programs that we begin because there have been other years in the county government where we've had a limited amount of money. We've had to cut things. And I don't want to set up future disappointments. So we're going to have to look at all the options and all the opportunities along the range of these issues and other issues, both within the additional money that we're being given in the short term for this period of time, and the resources that we have and hopefully we will have for a longer period of time. If there are any other comments, and anybody who has not yet spoken in the room, we're happy to hear you for the first time. Obviously, we welcome and we've already received any comments that you have that are more detailed for people that have spoken already because we review all of these things. And as I said, we will have a discussion about the county budget in a separate series of forums that will come up, most likely in October. And then the Board of Legislators, when they're receiving the budget, will have an opportunity to modify the budget and make those changes on the basis of two regional public hearings, and then the final public hearing that they'll adopt the budget, prior to adopting the budget sometime in December. So we don't want you to think this is the opportunity. This is an opportunity to express your opinions. We do have to provide detailed information to the federal government about how we intend to use these ARPA funds, and that is really why we have this forum, to sort of get the opinions that are out there in the community.
At this time, we do have one additional speaker. Our next speaker is Dan Marcy, speaking on behalf of Westchester Medical Center. Dan, I'll be promoting you now, so you should be able to speak very shortly. All right, Dan, you should be unmuted now. If you'd like to turn on your video, please feel free to do so.
That's excellent. I will keep video off because I'm slightly remote, but hopefully you can hear me this evening.
I can. Thank you for joining us.
Excellent. Good evening. My name is Dan Marcy. I am Director of Government and Community Relations for Westchester Medical Center Health Network. On behalf of everyone at Westchester Medical Center, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to discuss ways in which the American Rescue Plan, coronavirus, and local fiscal recovery funds can be utilized to make concrete advances in addressing the current COVID-19 pandemic and to be adequately prepared to address future pandemics or similar emergency situations. After thorough review and analysis, there are two proposals that WMC would like to submit to the county to review that we clearly, that we believe clearly meet the objectives of these American Rescue Plan funds. The first addresses the behavioral health care needs here in Westchester County, which is even greater due to the pandemic. Westchester Medical Center Health Network has been focused on research, treatment, and COVID-19 patients since March 2020. Many of these patients suffer with persistent medical and mental health symptoms after discharge. The condition, now termed COVID-19 syndrome, impacts roughly half of the patients seen across our network. This rate is higher than what has been reported. Early research estimates have shown anywhere between 10% to 30% of people with COVID-19 go on to become long haulers. According to the CDC, these individuals report having experienced disproportionately worse mental health outcomes, increased substance use, and elevated suicidal ideation. For psychiatric patients, these neuropsychiatric conditions are further exacerbated by their underlying psychiatric diagnoses and medical coagulances. As a result, our Behavioral Health Center has experienced a surge of both in- and outpatient volume. We had to repurpose multiple clinical areas to accommodate this excess capacity and to allow for social distancing and appropriate contact precautions. We have also had to repurpose space to care for COVID-19-positive behavioral health inpatients, having maintained one of the only units to serve this population in Westchester County. Notwithstanding our success, the capacity of Westchester Medical Center and our Behavioral Health Center to manage through the pressures of the COVID-19 pandemic for our psychiatric patients is being critically tested and strained. These temporary adjustments are not able to comfortably accommodate the volume and distancing requirements needed to enhance patient access and flow. Port, hello?
Yes, we can still hear you.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. I got cut off there for a second. Where was I? So these temporary adjustments are not able to comfortably accommodate the volume and distancing requirements needed to enhance patient access and flow, support inflection, control protocols, and reduce patient stress without renovation and refurbishment to our physical plant. Additional space is needed for telemedicine equipment to allow for flexibility when remote connection is necessary. We ask that you strongly consider allocating American Rescue Plans to funds to address the fundamental infrastructure shortcomings we currently face in the treatment of both COVID-positive and COVID-free behavioral health patients. These underlying issues can be effectively overcome if we are able to renovate two adult inpatient acute care psychiatric units, which currently includes our designated unit for COVID-positive patients, which would require roughly $2.15 million.
Thank you so much.
I'm out of time. There's just a little bit left, but if I'm out of time, then we are all set.
If you can just wrap it up very quickly, that's more than all right.
Okay, surely. Just to wrap up, the second area where the use of funds could have a great impact on our ability to extract, to address systemic public health response and control future pandemics is to address the issue of capacity. By governments and individuals taking some quick and drastic, drastic public health decisions, we'd be able to prevent our hospitals from becoming completely overrun as we've seen in other parts of the country and other countries. Westchester Medical Center is the regional hub of tertiary and courtinary care and primary referral facility to other hospitals, serving as a lifeline for 2.4 million people in the Hudson Valley. To address the surge capacity of the needs of the region, we're asking that American Rescue Plan funds assist in construction of a new inpatient bed tower that would be designed to house 128 ICU-capable beds, all of which capable of, excuse me, all of which would be private rooms to significantly reduce infection risk. All the rooms would be used either as an ICU room or as a medical surgical, as required by any current or future public health crises. Understand that I'm running out of time. Thank you for taking the moment, taking the time to listen to us this evening.
Thank you very much, Daniel. With that, that was our last online speaker, or last of the three that we've received so far. If anyone else is here in person and would like to make in-comment remarks, please, if you'll just head back downstairs and fill out one of the cards with our two staffers at the front, that'd be very helpful. And if anyone is here online and would like to make their comments heard, please click the chat function in the bottom right-hand corner of the page. Additionally, if you would like to submit your comments by email, you can direct them to westchesterforward@westchestergov.com. Again, that email address is westchesterforward@westchestergov.com. Thank you very much.
We're going to take a break of about 10 minutes, reconvene at 20 after 7:00. And Joan McDonald will chair the meeting. Larry Sewell will continue on. And if there are any other individuals who arrive in person or by electronic purposes, we'll hear their testimony, and we welcome anything in writing. We appreciate those of you that have come, those of you that have shared your point of view. We appreciate it deeply. Thank you very much, and we will stand in recess until 20 after 7:00. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. It's Joan McDonald, the Director of Operations for Westchester County. It is approximately 7:22. We are restarting the ARPA hearing, the American Recovery Program Act. I may not get all the words right, but we, right now, do not have any speakers here in person, and we do not have anybody registered to speak online. We will keep the program open for a while, and we will make a decision accordingly. Thank you. It is 7:35. Copper, do we have any more people who have registered to either speak in person or via WebEx?
At this time, we don't have any additional speakers.
Would you please list the web address for people to send in once more, and then we'll close this meeting?
Absolutely. If anyone else would like to submit comment regarding how Westchester County should use its American Rescue Plan Act funding, you can do so by submitting it to westchesterforward@westchestergov.com. I apologize, I may have gotten the name wrong there, but it's the ARPA plan, or the ARPA funding to westchesterforward@westchestergov.com. Again, one more time, that's westchesterforward@westchestergov, one word, dot com. Thank you all so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you so much, Copper and Larry. The hearing is adjourned.